Yeah, I saw that. Are you ready?
Yeah. Yeah, we're live.
Okay. Welcome to the Commissioner meeting. Seventeenth of August. Welcome, everybody. If I can have Austin start, we'll just go around the room and introduce yourselves.
Yeah, Austin Moir, Teton County Sanitarian.
Brian Colesley, Teton County土地
Paula Jackenetti, Clerk and Recorder.
Joe Delwell, Commissioner.
Dick Snellman, Commissioner.
Sam Carlson, Commissioner.
Melody Robinson, show of conduct.
Welcome. We have board minutes from July 20th, August 3rd, and then one also for our work meeting on August 1st. Do I have a, I've moved to approve those notices, ready?
I would second.
Been approved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Road encroachments, we have none this week. We have Country Squire Estate. So I will turn that over to Mr. Coleworthy. And go from there.
Are you gonna do the exemption first?
Oh, the ag co- well, okay. We want, need to remove an ag covenant from this proposed subdivision on the land. It's Resolution 2023 dash 23. And this piece of property is just south of Fairfield. So I have a recommendation from either one of the Commissioners.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second that.
It's been in our discussion. We probably need to talk to Austin about the lifting of the ag covenant.
Um, yeah, essentially, it's pretty straightforward. The hiccup is actually coming from the DEQ. Originally, they sounded like they wanted to wait until Planning Department approved for generating their sanitary approval. Now they want Commissioner approval as well, it sounds like. It's a bad idea, in my opinion, to lift an ag covenant without having sanitary approval already in line. So what that resolution does is it's pending the DEQ approval to keep the ag covenant in place until sanitary restrictions are lifted. Or, sorry, until sanitary approval's all done. So we're not ending up creating a lot that essentially skips sanitary review.
So should I change my motion?
Nope, no, the motion includes that. Or the resolution already includes that wording.
Thanks, Austin. Any other comments or? So it's been moved and seconded to lift the ag covenant on this partial ground. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. So now, Brian, I will switch over to you on the subdivision.
Okay, so we have the Country Squire subdivision, which went through the Planning Board on August 2nd. We did not have enough people for a quorum, but the motion was made to pass the subdivision approval on to the Commissioners. And the only melt was is that we, or is the Board, asked that all of the suggested conditions of approval on the state report be implemented, which they have been done on the plat, which is up here on the screen. It is a seventeen home subdivision using cistern for waters, and they will have individual subject systems, which are concrete subject tanks with a filtration system in them. The lot size, the total lot size is 53.186 acres, but the lot spaces are from, range from 3.01 to 4.953. The current land was dry land farming, which has an ag covenant, which, like Austin explained, DEQ wants your resolution letter from the Commissioners to lift the ag covenant to release the COSA, which then will be further reviewed and then approved. So... There is no, I mean, they've met all the requirements. They are, and they are including a, for wildfire risk and stuff, that they're gonna put a 25,000 to 30,000 gallon tank on the property. The HOAs on the property will pay for those. The maintenance and upkeep of that, so that if the fire department has to arrive on site, they have 25,000, 30,000 gallons of water available for a fire. They limited no more than two hoofed animals per property for low environmental impact. Like I said, the individual water supply is cistern. Their waste, solid waste is gonna be used to the Republic. Is that what they're called?
I think so.
Yep, so they have a contract with them, and they're also gonna contract out of Break Falls for their water to be filled, cisterns filled from there. There is currently nothing I see for ag wells to be drilled at this time. They had a weed management plan in place that was a concern from a couple of the individuals and their neighbors. There was concern about weed management. We took their public comments, we got involved with Mark and the weed department, and he spoke with those individuals specifically. There was one other individual who owns some property next door. He had some easement on the previous ag, or on the previous subdivision that they had built. He wanted to make sure that the easement was still in play. Our response was that it can always be challenged, but it's not currently gonna be challenged at this time. And we put him in contact with the developer and the landowner to work out a few things regarding snow removal and stuff like that, so he still has access to his property for farming. The other thing that the Board brought up was concerns that the private road would become property or responsibility of the county. There's a covenant, they have HOA and a covenant that will require them to maintain their own private road, and we explained that county would not be taking on any additional roads. The current tax revenue is $55 to the county, $139.73. With the seventeen homes going in, the county will receive $11,315. The school will receive $28,745. The mayor has provided a letter that currently at this time, there is no plan to allow them access to public services, like water, sewage, and stuff like that. There's no impact to the land or property. In lieu of them not putting a park, a public park on their property, they have offered a donation of $6,000 to the cemetery board, which I believe was accepted, correct?
Correct. Hasn't been received, but it's been.
Yep. And that will be pending the approval. Road made and stuff is all theirs within the subdivision. And fire protection and law, the sheriff has said that they would respond to calls. Fire Department said they would respond to calls within that area. And there's no current flood plan in the area. And pending DEQ, the recommendation is to approve the subdivision pending DEQ COSA approval.
Brian, did I understand there wasn't a quorum present at the Land Board? There wasn't a quorum present?
No, so the recommend-
They just are making a recommendation, but there was no actual vote, because you can't vote if there's no quorum, correct?
Correct, so the recommendation was to move it to the Commissioners to-
Without a, without a vote?
Yeah, since it was already delayed, it was delayed an additional 30 days due to some questions.
So with that, I would move to approve with DEQ.
I'll second.
Been approved, or? Moved, moved, been seconded to approve the Country Squire Estates. And do I hear a vote?
With approval of DEQ.
With approval of DEQ.
And you said one other acronym of COSA?
Which is from the DEQ.
That's just sort of took in a sanitary approval.
Okay.
From the DEQ.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that was the, um...
Library Board appointment. We had two applications, both live within- Both live in the city of Shoto, we were hoping to get some out of the city, but it's not, I mean, it's what we're living with. So we had Marcia Quillan and Carla Doncaster, and I would make a motion to accept Marcia's.
I would second.
Put her on the board.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could you spell Marcia's name, please? M-A-R-C-I-A?
Yes.
Same Marcia from the Health Department?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Right, there we go.
Quillan.
Quillan.
Okay, next item on the agenda is we need to open the budget hearing. That'll be for two weeks. Correct?
Correct. So there are preliminary budgets available at the Clerk and Recorder's offices they walk in. It's just a preliminary budget. If they have questions or would like additional reports, to just contact me. My direct line's 406-466-3145, and I can provide any additional information that they may need. And this stays open until it will be approved on the next meeting, which is September 7th at 10:00 a.m.
You guys up for questions?
Well, Melody, and we'll just leave this on the-
Right, but are you up for questions from me?
Oh, absolutely.
Awesome.
That's what we're here for.
Okay. All right, and I'm sorry, I have not looked at this here too far. Let's talk first about what did Teton County's total taxable valuation do compared to last year, given the fact of residential property appraisal?
It's up about $4,000 bucks a mill.
$4,000 a mill, that's a big jump. You guys have been happy with like $100 increases.
Anything going up is good, anything going down is bad.
It's not good.
So if our, if our mill is up $4,000 to, it looks like, $25,747, then I'm assuming that you guys are going to levy fewer mills than you levied last year, correct?
Last year, we levied $109.59. This year, we're gonna levy $97.61.
$97.61. And that is giving your budget about 2.45% growth that you're allowed under state law.
Correct.
Okay. And again, that growth factor, that's applied to the amount of property tax revenue you can generate. That doesn't, that's not your entire budget is only allowed to grow that much. Your property tax revenue into your budget is only allowed to grow that much, right?
Correct.
Because you could get a million dollar grant. And that's clearly outside the, the 2.4% cap is on the property tax funded portion of your bills.
Yeah.
Okay, looking at this budget then, and knowing that you gave out raises, and 2.45% isn't a lot of growth in a limited section of your budget, are there any significant purchases or projects in any of your front page accounts that you know of, having looked at their budgets?
The Sheriff's Office will be implementing their new communication system, but that-
But it's not coming out of the taxes on the front page. We have LITCF. Payment from the federal government. And we're gonna use that to pay for the radium.
Give that to me again, Joe, what were the acronyms?
LITCF.
LITCF, Local and Tribal Continuity Fund? Continuing?
Yes.
Continuing, okay. And do we know how much that is approximately?
The, the second payment of it. The first payment we put into the building fund. Second payment was $497.
Yes, $497,000.
$457,13.
$457,13. Okay. And that is, in a nutshell, modernizing, updating, digitizing, what is it doing to his communication system?
Oh, so the-
Anybody know? Yeah, all of the abortion.
So the current radio company that provided the services is retiring, and nobody took on the company. So they have to find a new provider that can continue the services. So we're completely having to change systems.
Making more of a lateral change?
Yep.
I'm sure there's new bells and whistles, but?
Yep. Which is updating the 911 system, which is through CAD and through the RGAI system.
Road Department.
Keith had put in for grants in the last two or three years, we'd failed to get any, and it was getting to the point where we were not gonna have radios in our cars. So it was, it was something that had to be done.
And is it gonna take every penny of that, $457?
No. I mean, he's not sure of the exact number because he's still dealing with it.
At this point, okay. What about, as we go down, anything, any improvements for the courthouse grounds or other buildings not, including the EMS building?
No.
How about road and bridge? Do we have any major projects slated there?
The chip seal, and we were gonna take the match for the chip seal out of that LITCF fund as well.
And this is again a chip seal I'm gonna-
It's going, finishing up today, hopefully.
It's gonna be tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
They were only able to get a little over five miles done yesterday. I think it was either five or seven miles. Because they started at the far end, so they had to haul the chips all the way from their bit up there. So thus, it was a slow start. Should go faster today. And should finish early tomorrow, and then they'll broom it on Saturday. And stripe it on Monday, probably, good.
How about road graders, road trucks? Is that like planning any, are we doing any road grid purchases this year?
Yes, we haven't gotten that ball rolling, but we will.
Do you anticipate like three, four?
We're, two, three, two, maybe two.
Two to three?
Probably two.
We probably bid out four, maximum of three, and depending on the price, we might even get two.
Is he purchasing any other new trucks? I know he's purchased semis and replaced-
No, no big purchases. He did, he did purchase a second mower tractor. It was a used one for $7,000 bucks.
Was that out of last year's budget, hers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't that come out of last year's budget?
No, we paid for it, yeah.
Okay, so it'll-
Oh.
So I don't think so, have we got it yet?
Yeah, he's got it, he's working on it.
I assumed that we paid for it.
No, we paid for it, but it's only been, well, the last, the last bunch of claims that came through.
Yeah, it wasn't last year, it wasn't here.
This year's budget. This year's budget.
Need anything other than regular activities planned there?
No, he has a pretty good stockpile chemical, so he was, I mean, Mark's good and conservative. He was able to stay within the budget. So we almost changed there versus ours. He'd already, they purchased those side by sides, and he said they've been fantastic. They've been a lot more done in less time. So that's been good.
And much safer.
Airport?
Story?
Yep.
Hey, I know that they've got grant funding that's coming in for potential runway project improvement. Shoto still trying to find contractor for runway improvement, that Fairfield group. Anything else change?
Budget's pretty much stayed the same at this point. There are, there's discussion on other management, but nothing's been decided or nothing's been actually discussed legally, so.
Well, they, they discussed it legally, as in open public meeting law discussions. It just hasn't been reviewed by any attorneys at this point.
Correct.
And that's the proposal for a fixed base operation. Okay. District Court?
Her only concern was the juvenile grant.
Which grant?
Detention.
Detention grant. But when we met with Lisa, she said that she had enough leeway in other line items that she was not gonna request any extra funding from us for that.
Did she, did that grant go away?
No, it's still the same, but it costs more per day. The costs have gone up, so she's concerned that it may not get her through the year, but she has enough room in her budget where she didn't request any increase in that line item.
Okay. Comprehensive insurance, what did our insurance do?
But it was a 6%?
Yeah, it did go up, but not as bad as we were feeling.
And comprehensive insurance is not health insurance, correct? That's everything else, not health insurance.
Vehicles, general liability.
Building's liability, vehicles.
Yep.
Do you, is that through MAKO?
Yes.
So in there, what, it just said MAKO Trust?
Yep.
And then Levitt is our, Levitt Insurance is the-
Levitt works through MAKO. So when we have claims, we work through that.
Yeah, they're our agent, yeah, they're our agent.
Library, any changes there?
No, there are changes.
And again, with library, you guys are basically only funding the collections and the staff. Buildings.
These are the guys, yeah.
Yeah, buildings and utilities and all that.
It's the same as all these, right?
Ambulance, are planning any new ambulances this year?
She is going to put in for a grant. She's gotten three ambulances through the Department of Transportation grant. And if she doesn't get the grant, we probably won't be buying an ambulance. But she does have $300,000.
$300,000.
Cap projects.
$50 is earmarked for a building.
Yep. And actually, her revenue, she had a really good year this year, her revenue was up considerably. So we put in, what was it, $97,000?
Yep.
Thousand, she was able, we were able to commit to that building out of hers.
$97,000? Cool, because that's up from-
She had an excellent year.
We had previously planned $50,000.
Yep. So we, with, with her budget, we agreed to leave the $50,000 in her cap projects, and we would use the $97,000, so that was good news. We won't tell the architect about it.
So he cashed $47,000 more.
He just did.
Hopefully, he's not on our list.
$1.8 million debt, net, okay. Cemetery District?
We went through their budget, and they have some projects, so we did bump their budget up a little bit. They have some needs on trees and fence issues and, is there a third one, trees and fencing?
And fertilizers.
Fertilizers, just their cost, it's just like everybody else's-
And gravel, and gravel.
Gravel.
Look, the cemetery. The one for Shoto City and the county are gonna handle that.
So we did, it's just basically everybody's cost of doing things have gone up. So we did bump that up a little bit.
County Planner GIs? Got anything going on, Brian? I know you've got a lot going on, but anything in your budget that you assume you for this year that you wouldn't have had last year?
I think he's just finishing up the, the stuff that Danny was involved with.
Yep, we just, we got, we paid out Draw 1 for the power sewage project. We got a draw, we paid out Draw 2 when Danny was here, and we did get, receive the Draw 1. And that's already been distributed to them, and all the reports are up to date.
And your budget is fairly similar to last year?
Yep, there was no changes.
The growth policy grant that we have, we submitted for the half payment on that, because we're 80% done with the draft document, and we're hoping to push that out next month for public comment.
Health nurse, Teton County Health Department?
Her budget is pretty much the same as last year, and it's a difficult budget because you have so many different grants coming in and out.
And this one, this, the 223 there, is that's personnel supplies, that sort of stuff not covered by grants? That, because all their grants are on the front or back page?
So this is the county, the county portion.
This is what the county puts in, yes. Protective Services?
Pretty much the same, other than salaries.
Okay. P-E-R-S, P-E-R-S, P-E-R-D-S, R-E-S. Similar to last year, up a little bit because of the salaries and wage increases.
Yes.
Health insurance, it went up?
It went up, it went up, yeah.
What was the percentage increase on that, do you guess, was it?
Was that 12%?
38 cents an hour, because that's what we offered for that.
Well, so I'm thinking we have our, I think that one up 6%. I think our liability went up 12%.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I would have to look.
6% sounds-
6%.
6%, I think it's sick, and I think that our, that our comp insurance went up 12%. I think we have those backwards when we say that out loud.
I think you're right.
And the county, again, took on that increase?
Yes.
Which means you still pay 100% of the basic plan for the individual employee?
Yes.
Okay. Other employee contributions, that's also payroll tax. I assume those are up a little bit because of the wage increase as well. Okay. Let's just through this.
The roads, the roads levy, mill levy went up about $3,000. So it gave them about $34,000 of spending authority. I put it all on the sheets now, Melody, for you.
Looking at, I'm assuming that they went down a little bit as well?
Correct, yep, I have last year's and the shares.
That they were able to increase their spending authority, that's.
Just $34,000, yep. So it went down from, what was 28, 27, yep, to 26, 33.
Looking at your health appropriations, anything new on there that we didn't do previously?
No.
Stayed pretty constant, we were able to do that because of that LITCF.
Which, is LITCF a one-time?
Yep.
Yeah.
And we got the first payment last-
Spring.
Spring, and then the second payment a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
And that's just one time only.
And we don't have, do we have any ongoing debt or, we're debt-free right now, and we, we don't have any, the courthouse is done?
Just ambulance, or ambulance, just graders.
Okay, correct, no, no structural?
Basically, we're debt-free.
Right. Overall, looking at this budget, how would you characterize it?
Blessed.
Yeah. Good budget, I believe.
No, again, Melody, the department heads are so conscientious. And when we knew the revenues and all of the tax value equation came up, the Commissioners, you know, they talked to department heads and said, you know, just be conscientious, be conservative. We don't know what this is gonna do, we don't know what this is gonna do for taxpayers. We don't know what this is gonna do for taxpayers. So if they can't pay their taxes, then we don't have money to be able to pay the bills. But that's why we have a cash reserve.
Since the, Paula, since the reappraisals came out and people, make sure I'm not asking this wrong. Would they, the, the initial round that the Department of Revenue talked about, you could appeal your appraisal?
You, you, you could, you could appeal your valuation.
Or your value, yeah.
Right, right, right. Yes, and we had, I'm, I'm not sure how many AB twenty-sixes, which is the ones that they would have filed directly with the Department of Revenue. Because this year, they could mail them in directly by themselves. And they all didn't come here.
Right.
None came here to me. I had about five or six people that asked for assistance to help get it figured out and we did that. I did have two MTABs that were, which is the Montana Tax Appeal Board, appeal board, four oh ones that are given directly to the county. They bypassed the AB twenty-sixes. I have two of those. But I turned those over to the Department of Revenue on Tuesday and she thinks that she can, they won't go to the tax, to our county tax appeal board. So the MTAB is the Montana Tax Appeal Board.
Okay.
The CTAB is our county tax appeal board.
So the two that you have are going to MTAB?
They, she, well, you have to give a copy to them because they have to go out and then they're gonna reappraise it.
Right.
In person, they have to go out there. And she said that with what their issues are, she said, I know that I can fix this. It won't probably not go to the CTAB? Correct. Um, I did ask her and she said in the Highline area, just in our district area, they have, I think she said there was over eighteen hundred AB twenty-sixes filed. But that was Blaine, Liberty, Tool, Glacier, Pondure, Shoto. And I don't think it was Cascade though, I think it was just Teton. But I'm not, don't quote me on that. You can reach out to them and for that. But she said approximately, a lot.
Joe or Dick, the, knowing that the tax funded part of your budget could only go up two point four percent and knowing that also a lot of the salaries and, and supplies to run the county come out of that part of our revenue and knowing that you gave wage increases across the board. Did you have any departments come to you and say, um, we can't fund wage increases on our existing budget?
We did not.
Okay.
Yes, our, our department heads, like Paula said, they have really done a good job of that tightening and they're committed to making it work. If we could back up just a second, I did miss something that I just thought of. The extension agent, our ag agent has been stranded by a nineteen eighty-nine Chevy pickup a couple of times this summer. And she's been busier than heck, so we are contemplating, they've got thirty-eight thousand in their cap projects. We are contemplating buying a used pickup. So she no longer gets stranded.
Right.
And have air conditioning after Tuesday?
Yeah, she has no air conditioning and she looked a little, little frazzled coming out.
Yeah.
Same one that, it's been here.
I always see Dan Clark's driving it, we see it goes at least back that far.
Same one.
And it's dependability, it's becoming an issue. So we are talking about finding a used pickup for Jennifer.
But that would come out of extensions capital projects?
Yeah, they've got thirty-eight, thirty-eight thousand dollars, thirty-eight thousand twenty-seven dollars in their cap projects, so...
Well, having a reliable vehicle in a rural county is pretty important, so that would make a lot of sense. Okay. And again, like the city of Shoto and Shoto Public Schools, you guys are lowering the number of mills that you're levying. But because of the reappraisal, it's likely that taxpayers will still see their, their taxes nudge up somewhat.
It'll be, it'll be an increase, but it's gonna be a lot smaller than the change in their baggage.
Right, right. Like the average reap, the average reappraisal for residential property in Teton County, according to the Department of Revenue, was thirty-seven, thirty-seven percent. I calculated on my own house was thirty-three percent increase. And then I calculated the increase that I'll pay for school taxes and city taxes. And it was, I didn't, I haven't carried the math all the way out, but it wasn't thirty-three percent. It was, it was not an apples to apples comparison. Because you guys all dropped your mills, because the value of the mill went up, because the taxable valuation...
And it's important for people to understand that too. Because they see that thirty-five or thirty-eight or forty, forty-two percent is one that was... And they think automatically that that's what their taxes are gonna go up and their...
Well, and in the notice, they used last year's mill.
Yeah.
Which is, I don't know how they could change that, but I wish there was some way they could change that because that's not accurate reflection of what's gonna happen.
Right. Well, and every, every taxi entity in Teton County is probably reducing the number of mills that it's levying. So they are reducing that part of the equation. But because everyone's taxable valuation has gone up, I've yet to find one that's, that's a wash. The mill's dropped enough to offset the increase in taxable valuation.
So and then you have new, and you have new construction that was never taxed before.
Well, and in, in Shoto, we have the Dollar Store, which Chris says has come fully on tax rolls now and is a million dollar project. So that certainly helped.
Yeah, the fact that they used last year's mill numbers were, it was misleading.
It was unfortunate.
But I, I don't know how they, you know, they have no way of knowing what the, you know, value change is gonna be. So that's probably not a thing they can do.
And people, there's no way to generalize necessarily what's going to happen with your own personal property taxes. Because all of those, none, all those taxable valuation numbers are different. And the only way to figure out...
And it depends on where it's, where you're at.
Is to do the math and you can't do the math until preliminary budgets come out.
Yeah, correct.
We know what knows are out there. So at least at this point, and of course you wouldn't yet because, but we won't know until November whether people protest their taxes based on, because they're unhappy with their appraisals.
Yeah, it just depends on how the process, how they go through the AB twenty-six process and appeal process. So yeah, we don't have an idea.
Anything else you wanna add about this budget? You want people to know about this budget?
Conservative. Not like our...
You disagree with Governor Jean Forte?
I disagree with Governor Jean Forte that we...
Any of the local government officials?
That we fluff our budget and we spend too much. Well, the fire fee, equipment will be on there now. And that's estimated at eighty-six thousand.
One of those frivolous voted levies that Jean Forte's last letter mentioned?
Yeah. So, and that's also, that's on page four, Melody.
This is the increase in the rate assessment.
Correct. And we've got it to where we're gonna split it out so that he'll be able to...
To keep, to track that specifically, specifically for self-contained breathing apparatus.
Yes.
I guess the only other thing is we need to give kudos to the department heads because they have been conservative.
Yeah, they've all been doing a very good job.
Just in the road department, Paula, I know we haven't settled with the union yet.
Correct.
But did you build in?
I built in the dollar sixty.
One three six two?
Mm-hmm, I did build that in. I, I had to to, to go forward.
All right. I don't have any more questions, guys?
Hey.
Commissioner reports I talked to you about, Mr. Rose Leo showed up yesterday and that's all I wanted to add.
Yeah, we talked about the chip seal project going on.
I was out there, it's snowing there, half, a little over half done.
Oh, good.
They're finished tomorrow. We're out of oil today. We don't want to get so many trucks, so they'll finish tomorrow, they figure around two, be done with it. But I would advise anybody to go that way, lagers and chips.
Thanks for the update. Any public comments? If not, we adjourn.
And if you have any further questions now, I'm going to leave you at that, sure you will.
Yeah.
Next meeting, September seventh.
I did appreciate your article, urgency to the comments to this hearing a month ago.
Yeah.
Is that yours?
Yeah, if you go ahead, me or someone, go ahead.
It's just a...
Are we set off yet?